To order this meeting is being recorded. I would ask if there's anyone else recording the meeting? Seeing none, if you please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Have some special recognitions this evening, Dr. Renell?
We do, as to chair. So the first one, MIAA, the Mass Underclassical Athletic Association, recognizes a female and male cross-country athlete each year based on their athletic performance, character, and community service. And very pleased to share that Emma Gervais was recognized with this honor from Auburn High School. So congratulations to Emma. She certainly represents us well. In terms of the CDMMEA Honor Festival, this is a music central mass, central district festival. We had several students for their music abilities, singing and instrument playing, recognized for this. So we had four of them who received high enough to qualify for the Mass All-State Festival. So Haley Norris was accepted into the band program, and Olivia Kernan, Shawn Campbell, Sam Benoit, Angie Davis, and Derek Brigham were accepted into the chorus piece. So also on top of those honors, Shawn, Sam, Angie, and Derek received all-state recommendations. So they're going to be auditioning for that in mid-January. So not only are they great musicians, they're all great kids and great students as well. Many of them, if not all of them, were recognized at the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship Breakfast that Dr. Lozay and I attended just before Thanksgiving. So all around great, great young men and women. And then also wanted to, through the chair, if Mrs. Kaufman wants to make a comment, but I know that we had many middle school and high school students who assisted with the Auburn Youth and Family Services Rocket Race that Mrs. Kaufman spearheads and is wildly successful every year.
Thank you. I was overwhelmed. We asked for some volunteers from the high school and the middle school, and we had over 25 kids from the high school and about 15 from the middle school. You guys continue to impress. I, you know, it was wonderful to see you guys take initiative, but also for the older kids to help the younger kids come out on a rainy day and raise. It was really a record-breaking year for us this year to raise, you know, almost $10,000 for the hundreds of families in town that you guys serve, or that youth and families serve. So thank you so much. I really, it's just another example of why, you know, we do what we do. We're so proud of you guys. And it was, we were truly blessed. And Sally extends her thanks as well, so.
Awesome.
Excellent, great event. Any comments, questions?
Congrats, Doc.
Yeah, congratulations on the amount of money and thank you for doing so. I'm sure every penny counts. And I'm sure there were a lot of headaches involved, and you were probably happy when it's over, but probably had a pretty good feeling about it.
Thanks, yeah, we did. We were happy when the clouds parted.
It looked rainy when I saw them running.
Well, thank you. Thanks to everyone who was involved in that. And seeing those citizens to comments, I'm moving on to Ryan and Ally for student representatives' reports.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So first off, after the week of meetings we had, we then had our Thanksgiving Spirit Week leading up to the assembly where we all had a lot of fun as we competed in a lip sync between the grades. For that, for that Spirit Week, we had Grout Fit Day to begin with, and Pajama Day, then Auburn Day. And also on that Wednesday, as Dr. Renell mentioned, was the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship Breakfast. It was a very nice way to kick off Thanksgiving break, being able to relax and hang out with our friends. Then, once we got back from break, trimester one quickly came to a close as finals were Thursday, Friday, with the try ending officially Friday and beginning second try Monday. And last Friday was the tree lighting ceremony and the marching band performed.
Today, there was a Humanities Scholars trip to Assumption College. I went, and if you don't know, Humanities Scholars is a group that's given a specific issue for, say, the six months that we really go out and do it. You go to different colleges and a bunch of other schools come together, and we talk about this specific issue, which this year it's youth movements. So today, we went to Assumption, me and 10 other kids, I believe. And we toured, had lunch, and it was very fun. Student Council is getting ready for Christmas, so we've been making a five days of Christmas. So the week before break, we spoil the teachers with, say, like coffees, or we make them cards, cookies. They like to decorate their doors, too, so just getting ready for Christmas and another upcoming Spirit Week as well. And as for Rockets to Rockets, we've been kind of, not under the radar, but we haven't really gotten a kickstart yet just with everything going on. So finally, being on the Eboard for that as well, we're starting a fundraiser. So we're selling sweatshirt blankets to help fundraise for our club as well as on December 19th, I believe, it's a Wednesday?
Yes.
There's Papa Gino's dine-in fundraiser. So from 4:00 to 9:00 p.m., all profits, if you dine in or take out, it goes towards the Rockets to Rockets, or like a certain percentage goes towards it. So that'll help raise money for our club. And I think from 5:00 to 6:30, Rockets to Rockets will meet as a club and have pizza together, so that'll be fun.
Like, if we wanted to go, do we need a certificate?
Um, not that I know of. I believe you can just show up, but I can, again, if I can, if I find out tomorrow, I have a meeting, and I can always email it to the. I don't believe you need a slip, but if you do, it's all over there.
Yeah, I know. For the college, we just have, like, PDFs that we just email out.
Yeah.
Love an excuse not to cook.
Especially during the Christmas weekend.
Yeah.
Great. Any questions or comments for our student representatives?
A question. How do I purchase a blanket?
There's sheets. I don't know if they hand them out. I know Auburn High School has a hand for those sheets, too. I can always try and find a way to get it to you.
Can you buy them online, or?
No, there's a flyer for it, but I can email it to you, or I can, I mean, I can bring it.
So through the chair, you know what I'll do is I'll, if you can have that sent to me, I'll include in the email notification to all of the families that goes out tomorrow.
Awesome, okay, yeah.
I think we may have included it before, but if you send it, that'd be great.
Yeah, I'll talk to Ms. Renell tomorrow.
Okay. Makes a good Christmas gift.
I was gonna say, stocking stuff for dinner? What else can you add?
Free babysitting?
Oh, I tell you.
Any other questions or comments for our student representatives?
Just thank you always for your reports. Very thorough.
They get better and better. You're getting really good at this. Do you want to stick around? Do you guys have some things to do?
I have my brother.
Okay. What was that, Ryan? Are you making something up?
I'll show you the telephone work I have.
Yeah. We know what we don't want.
Thank you very much. We have a great holiday. We don't see you.
Yeah, they.
I was definitely not that composed today.
I would not seek approval of the regular meeting minutes for November 13 and November 14.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes for November 13th and Wednesday, November 14th.
Second?
In favor?
Aye.
And now move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I wanted to just highlight for you, I know that we share throughout the year the great working relationship that we have with the town and all of its departments. But recently, the fire department came and gave, according to Dr. Lopez, some great presentations to the grade three and four students. And they were able to, based on the staff, they there rotated 17 classes through the smokehouse in one day. I don't know if you saw, but it was posted to our Facebook page, some of the interactions that the firefighters had, not only with the students, but with the Swiss Rockets to Rockets program, too, which was really, really nice. So we thank the department for their ongoing collaboration with us. And staying with the fire department theme, we had the honor and great pleasure of going recently to enjoy the celebration for the Fire Safety Poster Contest winners. So listed here, I'll go through and just read the names to you quickly. But this is also always a really fun event. It was held the Monday of the Thanksgiving week. And it's always a great surprise because they give away two bicycles. So when the students learn, they learn that morning who actually gets the bike. It was really very exciting. And their families are there, and they do a nice presentation. Chief Coleman spoke, but also Lieutenant Shawn Steele, who really heads up this initiative. And the students' artwork, I will say, was really of excellent calibre. Really good. So congratulations to Taylor Courtney, Isabella De Souza, Ryder Trajonowski, Riley Doherty, Natalie Eck, Charlotte Silva, Grace Foster, Karina Caress, Addison Heatwool, Kendall Johnson, Mystic Marion, and Carson Rassikot. And I believe, yes, it was Mystic and Carson, who were the overall winners and got the bikes. And they were pretty cool bikes, actually, that were there that day. So very exciting.
That's great.
Question, Dr. Renell, are these artworks posted anywhere that we could see, or?
So I did, through the chair, I did take pictures, and we posted it on Facebook, but I think you could enlarge them and see. They were on display at the fire department, but I'd have to look and see if they go back to the schools. I'm not exactly sure, or if the kids get to take them home. But I can follow up and find out, but they did a really nice, yeah, really nice job.
I think they actually did a little blurb of them on Auburn Mass Daily. I think the kids' names were, and I think he put the, on the online version, he made with the pictures as well, so.
Through the chair, they did. I did see it there, too. Yes.
Any other questions or comments? Congratulations to those students. And just to reiterate, what you had said at the outset was that the great relationship that we have with the Auburn Fire Department. And that goes for all of emergency services and the other town departments as well. So I just wanted to take that opportunity to appreciate, now to let them know that we do appreciate the relationship we have, whether it's the DPW, or the fire department, or you name it. They're on board with us. The DPW, over the years, has done so much for us and helped us pull things together, and it's great. It's not, and I've said it before, it's not like that in every town, so we're very fortunate to have this.
One more comment through the chair. Yeah, they do it in a very tasteful way, too, because my daughter's in third grade and came home and taught us a lot about, you know, fire safety and how to get out. But it was very matter-of-fact. It wasn't scary, so they have great techniques over there.
They're doing a good job.
Yeah, we're lucky to have them.
Question, do they encourage the children to encourage their parents to practice?
Yes.
Yes?
Which we ignore, but we are going to.
A diagram?
Oh, yeah. She had it all mapped out for us.
At the place to meet.
Oh, okay.
That's great. So wanted to congratulate those individuals. The Auburn Chamber of Commerce, they are tremendously supportive of the schools, not only through the grants, but also scholarships that they give away at graduation, too. So $3,000 in grants were awarded to these individuals who wrote grants. As I always do, I want to thank those whose grant was not successful because it takes as long to write an unsuccessful or unfunded grant, I should say, than a funded one. But congratulations to, from the high school, we had Maria Barrios, Ella Janess, and Michelle Prunier. From the middle school, Amy Berg and Pat Bazella, Jared Khan, Megan Garvin, and Tammy Bailey, and Stephanie Sala. From Bryn Mawr was Haley Dowd and Emily Wild's group. At PAC was Alisa Lemire and Liz Dayhall, as well as Julie Benoit. And at Swanson was Sarah Canal and Shane, Alicia LaPamato, Sue Koryan, Megan Berg, and Jamie Necropolis. So they did a great job in writing those, and we thank the chamber for their support.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
In terms of the CPR AED, just wanted to give you a brief update around this. You know of our ongoing initiative here. And the middle school held a really extremely well-planned under Denise Collins, who is the PE Health Department Chair across the grades. They held a wellness day where students were, did, went through their screenings, their posture, their height, and their weight. They also did some physical activity. All students were trained in hands-only CPR, were trained also in the AED. So really a great initiative. And what we're working to do is, for the upcoming Holiday Craft Fair, we were just talking with Mrs. Collins. Today, we're actually going to be seeking four to five middle school volunteers and four to five high school volunteers. We have Mr. Young coming out from the American Heart Association. We're going to have some firefighters there's so that when people come in, they can be trained in hands-only CPR. It really takes literally minutes to do it. It's endorsed by the American Heart Association. So our goal is to try and have 2,000 people trained by our February CPR AED meeting. And with 600 that we've done at 625 or 626 at the middle school, adding the high school, we've got lots of people trained around the district. Hopefully adding in, not only at the Holiday Craft Fair, but we're going to be bringing it to basketball games on Saturdays at Swiss and at the middle school. So when people come in to watch a basketball game, they can go and learn how to do hands-only CPR or the AED, too. So we're excited that it's moving forward in a positive direction.
That's great.
Wanted to make you aware of something a bit less exciting. This is our year of reviews and audits and such. So Mrs. King was recently notified that they will be coming in to do a procurement audit. These are regular, they happen on a regular schedule. So they will be coming to the Auburn Public Schools this year. We will keep you apprised when that happens. But with any of these audits, and I know Dr. Lozay is going to share something to this effect, it just takes a tremendous amount of time upfront in preparation of it. It's just almost an unreasonable amount of time, quite honestly, including to get the documents. But they are, they are underway.
You can say it's unreasonable.
Okay, it is. Dr. Lozay may say that.
How long is the actual audit? How long does it take place, the whole process?
So through the chair, it varies based on how long they're going to come. So they have come in the past. I don't know that they've done this audit necessarily for food service, but sometimes it could be a day that they come. It could be three days, it could be a week. But Dr. Lozay may have more information about that. And, you know, but they may be on site for that amount of time, but they're taking, they have to submit tremendous amount of documents through the portal in advance, and those are reviewed by them, and then they come out. And, I mean, with an audit, they're looking for problems or issues that we may have. And while I am certain that we do things in exemplary fashion, I won't be surprised if there will be some things that they find that we need to change or tweak, and we will, you know, come up with a correction.
And is that all falling on Mrs. King?
So she and her assistant for that one piece. So they're doing the procurement audit piece. Dr. Lozay's got, well, she reported on her things, Mrs. Reed's special education audit, so it, you know. But it does largely fall on the director or administrator's shoulders. It does.
It's a wonder that we were able to survive with the food services that we had growing up in schools without.
Yeah, right. Tater tots and coke. I'm still alive.
Very fortunate to make it through.
It's very true. The next item is brought back for you for your consideration, the CIPs from 2017 to 2024. If you remember, a couple of meetings back, we brought forward, it didn't include the 17 and 18 ones because those had previously been approved, but I believe it was from 20 to 24. And in meeting with Town Manager Jacobson and Mr. Kazanovich, they expressed concern about the level of requests that we had in 2024. They have a plan in place and hoping to keep the school department somewhere in the $800,000 range or thereabouts. Now, what I will share with you is, we're actually, in looking at these from 17 to 24, we're actually getting some additional things accomplished. We are pushing off, and I apologize, in the memo here, it says that the Swiss underground tank is being pushed off. That's not accurate. I think this was an incorrect final version that went out. It's actually the central office underground tank. But if I can just point out to you some of the changes. So if you remember, with the MSBA partnering with us for over 50% reimbursement for the Pakachog group, we're able to repurpose. Now, because these are from fiscal years prior, it will require town meeting approval. But typically, I've not ever seen, there was an instance where it was any issue. So what we would propose to do to utilize that money is we'd put almost $128,000 towards the Swanson underground tank removal. That was planned for 2024. That work will actually get completed. You'll see it sprinkled out from across a few years. That'll get completed in 2021. Another thing that is new, if you look on the 2018 CIP, this was not on any year's CIP. We're actually going to be replacing the UNIVENTS at Pakachog School. And this was done all with meeting with Mrs. Whorswicki and Mr. Fahey and I. So that's an added benefit that we're going to get. And also a new item is a district van. The van that we have is utilized literally every day. And we believe that if we are to get a second one, we'll be able to even help eventually redo some of our athletic classes. So for some of the smaller ones, when Ally reported about the Humanities Scholars Group, they, and I don't know whether they were able to use it today or not to go to Assumption College, but it's in conflict because our, with our programming up at the high school where the kids go out for their work experiences, the van is needed for that. If we had a second van, rather than hiring AA, which is expensive, it's a contract price, Mr. Dufour would have been able to drive the students to Assumption. They all go through a training process. So we think that's a good benefit to us. So the other item in 18 is more money towards the underground tank removal. And I will say, too, that Mr. Fahey recently had, we hired LaMountains out of Charlton, and they came and did assessments on our underground tank. So of those, we're actually going to be putting off the central office one. There aren't any changes in 19. In 20, with the roof project, we were actually able to do the entrance. It's an ADA entrance now to Pakachog. It's the gradual slope of the concrete, the walkway out front. We will be, we increased the amount, I think, Mrs. Harrington, you may have mentioned a concern or a question about, would the $60,000 be enough to resurface the tennis courts and some of the other work there? So we've increased that by $20,000 in 2020. In 21, we'll see that's when the Swiss underground oil tank will come out of the ground. And what we realized in the original amount, we had $80,000 anticipated to resurface the track that surrounds the football field at Auburn High School. In getting new quotes, updated quotes, because that's based on the last time that we did it, it's going to be more than the $260,000 mark. So we reprioritized monies. Because if you recall, the lease payment for the field, the town's going to pay $300,000 upfront on a stabilization. And what we had in, we were able to repurpose for other reasons. So we now have, and it will be completed in 2023, enough money to resurface the track based on numbers now and projections that Mr. Fahey, we won't know until what to bid at that time, but feels comfortable that we should have enough. And we were also able to put an additional $20,000 in 21 towards equipment purchases, usually replacement things. You see in 22, that's where we have some additional money in there for the high school track, and then the final payment is in 2023. The Swanson Road HVAC upgrades, we should by then be in great shape. We're actually, Mr. Fahey is procuring bids now to do the gymnasium area, I mean, excuse me, to do the auditorium area, to take care of that. So we'll be in great shape. So the one thing that you'll see that is being pushed off is the removal of the central office oil tank, and that would go to 2025. And that value is about $280,000 to do that. So it is, it is my recommendation that you approve these, understanding and recognizing that, you know, I think it shows on the school communities part that you are giving in here. I know we've had budget presentations, and we're at about a 4.1%. And, you know, I think the positions in there are ones that were demonstrated by the leadership team, and I think supported by you that we need. So I think that based on what we get by being able to, and it will require town meeting approval, but I'm confident that we will be able to make the case to them that we're actually getting some things. And putting off the oil tank for central office is something that Mr. Fahey feels is okay for us to do.
Questions? Is it a health concern, the oil tank, the underground oil tanks? Is that why they need to come out, or?
So through the chair, it's my understanding that they have a life expectancy, and you want to make sure that they don't leak because then you have a bigger problem and things. So, but we would be replacing them with underground tanks once they come out. The one at Pakachog can come out, and that's a much less cost. I think it was maybe for $80,000. But it's because we're not going to need to put another one in because we converted to gas several years ago that went up the street there. I think it's, actually, it's, I'm not sure, maybe.
Yeah, I think, I believe, I think it got placed under Swiss instead of the $70,000 underground.
Yeah, because Swiss is listed a couple times.
Yeah, I think, I think it should have been, I think it was just a typo on page two under 2018.
No, it's actually in 2020 to remove the underground oil tank at Pakachog for $80,000.
Oh, yeah.
The, it's spread out the cost for Swiss, which is anticipated to be about $280,000. It's spread out over several years. But rather than waiting until 2024, this will have it completed in 2021.
Okay, one more question about the central office one. Don't we share this building with another?
With the fire department?
Yeah, so, I mean, can we share the cost with them?
You know, that's a good question. I do know that we have an arrangement that's been longstanding, and it has to do with, one pays the heat and one takes care of the electricity. But I'd have to get the details and be reminded of that from Mr. Fahey, but I can get that information and share that with you. But I can certainly ask that.
Through the chair, what's the, do we know what the expiration is for the central office tank? Because I know it can be a huge cost if it does, in fact, leak.
Agreed. I don't know if we got that level of detail from the report, but I can follow up with Mr. Fahey and get back to you on that. Yeah.
Any other comments or questions regarding the amendments to the CIP? Seeing none, I would entertain that motion.
Make a motion to approve the amendments to the FY 2017 through FY 2024 CIPs as presented?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I, through the chair, I'll get that information and get back to you on those. The next item, this has actually become a tradition that we have put this in here. So I know that we talk often and believe it to be true that we get tremendous support from the Auburn community, but we likewise return that favor. I think that it's a great lesson for our students to live and breathe every day. Our staff really exemplifies that. Our students, as you heard from Mrs. Kaufman, take those lessons to heart. So this is really just a snapshot of ways that we believe as a district, we help give back to the Auburn community in a variety of ways, we help give back to the Auburn community in a variety of ways, believing we should do so. But very, I know when I look at this list, I'm just so proud, because I know the different things that happen throughout the year. But when you see it compiled in a list like this, it's really pretty magnificent, I think.
Yeah, isn't it? Pages.
I don't know how they squeeze that into a school year.
I know. I know.
Well, the year's not even over yet.
No, it's only just down the second trimester.
That's only the first part of the packet.
Wow, it's impressive.
It really is special, you know, something they'll take through the rest of their lives. And it really changes the person.
So a couple of donations that we received. Mrs. Smith let us know that Pakachak School received a hundred dollar donation from the New England Kids Pediatric Dentistry. They had participated in collecting and donating some excess Halloween candy. So it is my recommendation that you accept that donation. And there is letters in the packet of thanks already sent.
I would entertain that motion.
I recommend the motion to accept the donation of a hundred dollars to Pakachak School for New England Kids Pediatric Dentistry.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I think it's great through the chair, the idea. I'm still trying to get rid of Halloween candy in my house, so.
There you go.
Giving back like that is just wonderful.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then also another donation that came from Bemis Farms Nursery. They have participated in the Scarecrows for Solutions Program. Some, Bemis had made some scarecrows, so they donated thirty dollars to the Pakachak School.
I would entertain a motion to accept that donation.
Make the motion to accept thirty dollar donation from Bemis Farms.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then finally, annually, we receive, the third grade students receive dictionaries from the Auburn Webster Lodge at Hulks. And once again, they have provided those. So it is my recommendation that you approve those, with Dr. Lopez having said to thank you.
I would entertain that motion.
Make a motion to approve the donation of dictionaries for every third grader attending Auburn Public Schools from the Auburn Webster Lodge at Hulks.
Do I have a second? Any discussion?
That's wonderful.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we now move on to unfinished business.
So as we typically do, we will put the twenty twenty draft budget on the agenda up through and including January ninth, when you'll need to vote to send it, that draft forward. At this point, I think that we hold steady with the budget that's been drafted and then wait and see. And hopefully Governor Baker will come out with some good news. We did hear at the Worcester County Superintendent's Association meeting yesterday, Tom Scott, who's the executive director of MASSS. He spoke to us and shared that they're hopeful, we're hopeful, that there will be some movement on the foundation budget recommendations, which really are to revisit how they fund schools. Particularly, I reported a few years ago regarding health insurance, but also the circuit breaker funding and special education costs in general. So he seemed hopeful, from what he's hearing at the State House, that they may be ready to make some movement on it, probably not fully so. But with Auburn's increase in enrollment that we saw this year, and coupled with hopefully some positive finances at the state level, hopefully we'll see a nice increase in chapter seventy. So at this point, I think we wait and see what comes.
I just have a question on that, if I might. In one of the presentations, I believe it was Pakachak and Bryn Mawr, presented that they would like to share a full-time permanent substitute teacher. The salary that they were coming up with was what we would currently pay a day-to-day call sub. It came to like eight thousand at one school and eight thousand at the other, or eight thousand one hundred. All I could think of is if we're trying to hire a permanent person, sixteen thousand dollars for the year is extremely low. Walmart pays nineteen thousand a year. So I was just wondering if there was any consideration to coming up with a more realistic figure for that. As it seemed like a very worthwhile idea. But I just think if you're expecting a college graduate to come in for that kind of money with the hope that someday they'll be a permanent teacher, to me, that salary is taking advantage of them.
Or even the permanent sub, the amount we pay the permanent subs, because they get an increase.
Would be more than that.
It would be more than that.
Right. I was doing the math on that, and I'm like, whoa.
Yeah, I would have to agree with that as well, I know. Especially with extended absences, which we've had some issues with. Kiddos are having multiple subs in classrooms without any assistance in the class, just because it's not kindergarten class.
Yeah.
And that's, I'm fearful that that's going to cause reduction in learning for these kids and cause them to have trouble in future years, especially if we don't have somebody with high caliber in there.
I mean, I thought of it from two fronts. If I was a college graduate hoping to be hired as a teacher someday, and I got that job, I'd be very happy. But that salary is kind of, kind of.
Abundant.
No.
Can't live on that.
No, it's not. And the other thing is, Dr. Brunel sent out a very nice letter to the retirees, trying to recruit us to come back and sub. And the letter's so good, I still have it, and I reread it. And I'm sure some of the others maybe, I hope, have taken advantage of it, but I don't want to get up in the morning.
So through the chair, we do.
To be honest.
We are striving to beef up our sub list. And we did reach out to all retirees, teachers in IAs and ABAs. We've had two who have come in and have signed on, which is great.
Good.
But we are, we collect data, and I have another list going now from all local school districts. And all of them are saying that they're all having this challenge. So we are working on that. But to your point, if you would like, I could return at the January, or our next school committee meeting, I should say, with a recommendation, even if we were to use that hundred fifty dollar amount, I think we'd be looking at twenty seven thousand dollars. And one of the thinkings was around this, that the individual will be eligible for health benefits, which is something that our day-to-day substitutes don't get.
Right.
That benefit coupled with the salary. But I hear your point, if it's the will of the committee, they can certainly do that.
I'm okay with you having a look at it, at least reassessing and checking the numbers.
I mean, health insurance is worth a lot in itself, so, I mean, if they're getting that, then.
But on the other hand, if it's a young, out-of-college graduate, they're not twenty-six yet, so they can still be on the parents'. So that's, huh? So I think they deserve more money than.
I would agree. Through the chair, it sounded like they really wanted a baccalaureate-prepared person.
Yes, it did.
For this position. And so, you know, I just think it's highly, highly needed, especially at that young age, to have someone more permanent in there. And to get someone good, we're going to have to pay them.
Yeah.
It's worth bringing it back to the leadership team for a conversation.
What is our first-year new teacher salary up to?
So I think next year, I want to say it's forty-seven five.
Okay. So maybe it's not going to be that high, but it ought to be.
No, I don't think we should approach that.
No.
Otherwise, we could have a roving teacher that's on salary.
Yeah.
Sort of fill in the blanks. I don't know, it's tough, it's tough when you talk about the dollar amount, because we're still paying our regular sub pool with the funding that we would be putting into this person's salary. But I understand what you're saying. We're not going to get someone who's going to come in and buckle down and say, okay, this is where I'm staying for a while. It's just, it's not enough of that money. And I don't know that it's, I don't know that it's going to happen for twenty-five thousand dollars, because as soon as something else opens up, they're going to be gone. And we're going to be dependent on that sub pool that we also have to fund.
Through the chair, aren't they technically permanent subs, though, really? I mean, that position would be a permanent, a floating permanent sub.
Through the chair, that would be, the intention would be to have somebody where they would be split. I think to your point, Mrs. Bacarles, I think that they would likely hire someone, not the permanent sub, because they'd be sharing that position. So they'd bring somebody in for someone with long-term absences. So this would be more to cover those day-to-day ones, because they, they struggling. And Dr. Lozay continues to have sub-training sessions. They're struggling to get enough people in to cover people in their absences, teachers in IAs. Teachers being our priority, obviously. But I will come back, I will take a look at it and see.
What I'm talking about, when I say a full-time employee, a full-time teacher, is someone that, that we're putting everything into. We're giving them a lot of professional development, they're becoming a part of our team, they're going to be full-time. They have a future with us, they're not going anywhere else, they're not a substitute. So I just think, once we get to a certain point, and you're talking fifteen, twenty thousand more dollars to hire a full-time staff member.
So then, through the chair, forgive me, this is silly, but would we then consider putting this hiring into the same pool as we do with the teachers in terms of contracting? So when they go, like, would they fall under, you know, would they fall within the union? Would they go into that? Or would this just be a one-off employee?
Through the chair, I would recommend that they not go into the teachers' union. I think that, you know, certainly it could be structured, they would have an individual contract. They would have benefits, and they'd have some sick time, obviously, some personal time bereavement and such. But I would recommend putting them on an individual contract and not part of the teacher's contract, because then they'd be subject to the teacher's salary scale. And I think that an individual who's required to do planning, both short-term and long-term, a permanence, a sub, let's just call them a sub, when they go in, then they're not required to do that type of planning. They're taking someone's plans and implementing them. When they go, and when you agree to the hundred and fifty for those over thirty days in one position, they're now doing the planning on their own, the teachers seemingly at home incapacitated in the hospital or where have you. They're interacting with parents and things, whereas a day-to-day sub is not responsible for that.
Right, I was going to say that, they don't have to make the plans, they don't have to meet with parents.
Right.
They don't really have to respond to the emails and all of that, the special conferences. So there's a lot of the things that someone else is doing for them.
Right.
Which is why they wouldn't be a first-year teacher salary.
Right, right.
But I think they deserve a little more respect than sixteen thousand dollars.
Okay, I'll definitely look at that and bring that back, add that to our agenda for our next meeting.
And then, through the chair, I have one other question. Would this individual, just in terms of giving them an opportunity to make more money, would they still be eligible to help out with some of the clubs? And after some of our clubs, we have stipends that attend, especially after-school programs. It might be a lot of money, but would we try to make them eligible for that?
And we're always looking for people to staff in our satellite, our Galaxy, bereaving. So they would have those opportunities at both primary schools. They do after-school clubs that they offer to staff, so they would be eligible to do that, too. Yes, for sure.
I think maybe if we had a range in which to work with, then it could be dependent on the individual as well.
Yeah, through the chair, I totally rescind the comment on the permanent sub wage. There's a huge difference between what they do day-to-day and what this person would, the expectations would be. I think health insurance is a pretty positive perk in itself, so.
And you've got to get someone that's flexible and able to fly by the seat of their pants, because you never know what's going to happen when you go in.
Right.
Thanks for those comments.
Sure. Right, bulletproof jacket.
How about my experience, being called Betty White when I arrived? I was announced as Betty White is here. Yeah, and I was younger then.
It wasn't Betty Davis.
So in terms of the school committee tour of the schools, if you're still interested in that, the only schedule day, and if it works, we can certainly make it work. The thirteenth is, Tammy Jacobson is open house. I don't know if any of you have any intention to attend that, but we could certainly make it work. And actually, sometimes we get through the schools in the morning. So it's up to you if you would like to do this and which day works.
Yeah, through the chair, the twelfth is the AYFS meeting, breakfast meeting, so I don't know if that would work.
It usually goes to about ten, so.
I'm free any of those days, and I can even get up if I have to.
Good news.
The eleventh works best for me, but I'm like.
I'm fine.
I can do either Tuesday or Thursday.
Me too.
Oh, yeah, Thursday's fine, too. I don't know if I would.
I mean, if that would be easier for us to go, then I'll go to the open house straight from the tour, if that's easier.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay, well, the tour goes all day, though, doesn't it?
Well, we usually did lunch at a school.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, if we did like a Tuesday, then you could do both if you wanted.
I thought someone said they weren't available on Tuesday, is that you?
No, I could do Tuesday.
I could do Tuesday.
I'm going to do Thursday.
That's pretty good, both days.
Tuesday?
Okay.
All right.
Looks like Tuesday.
Perfect. I'll email you, and typically what we do is start here, and then we'll go, create a schedule.
Okay.
Sounds great. Okay, we now move on to new business.
So just noted for you, the holiday concerts, the first one is tomorrow night for third grade, and they go right through the eighteenth. There are some snow dates planned in there, hopefully not needed. But truly, if you need a jolt to get in the holiday spirit, attending one of the concerts will certainly do it. So I encourage you to do so. As I said, Tammy Jacobson invited all of you to the open house from twelve to two on the thirteenth. And then finally, in the past couple of years, we have, the committee has decided to not have the meeting right before the December break. So I put it on here for your consideration if you chose to do so.
There's nothing pressing, I see no reason why we need to hold the meeting when should something come up. But I think we could always address it at that point.
I'm fine with that.
I agree.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to postpone that meeting, or maybe fire another meeting.
I'll make a motion to cancel the school committee meeting of December nineteenth.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then finally, list of various upcoming events. Parent conferences were held last night, and we continue to stay very busy, which is a good thing.
You sure do. Okay, teaching and learning, Dr. Lozay?
I have a few things this evening to update you on. As our student reps mentioned yesterday, it was a half a day for them, but it was a full day for our staff. So we had parent-teacher conferences for the teachers in grades pre-K to eight. See that they were very busy, they had one after another, some of you might have attended some of those. At the high school level, staff engaged in two different activities. One group of teachers worked with our restorative justice consultants, and then another group of teachers tuned up their teaching, is what they called it. And really, what they, what they did during that time was to really review their objective writing, looking at their activators and summarizing activities. And then they all really engaged in a focused discussion around student engagement and what that really looks like in a classroom versus maybe just student compliance. So it seemed like it was beneficial across the grades for everybody for that half-day. So it was great. And our next one will be on January eighteenth. And as Dr. Brunel mentioned, this is the year of reviews. So the Department of Elementary Ed and Secondary Ed, or DESI as we call them, conducts monitoring reviews of various programs every six years, and this is Auburn's sixth year. So currently, we're undergoing reviews in special education, civil rights, English language learning. And then we were recently notified that Title I, Title II-A, and Title IV will also be reviewed. So, yeah. So last year, as part of the self-assessment phase, which is the first phase, the district, as Dr. Brunel mentioned, had to submit just a multitude of documents, around thirty-five to fifty different indicators. So there were written narratives, but there were also pieces of evidence that we had to submit. So that was a very time-consuming task, but fun. I'm sure we all agree it was fun. So based on that, they then send back some preliminary information, at least to the special education department. And now they will come on-site, or some onsite visits, which will include interviewing staff, interviewing parents, visiting schools, observing classrooms, and also asking for additional documentation to make sure that wasn't just the documents we sent that verify it, but that we have something else to show that as well. That's scheduled for the week of January seventh, and we've been notified it will only take two days, so that's not too, too bad. And you know, as much as it's a time-consuming event, it's very eye-opening for us as we go through the self-assessment. And we can say, you know, we could do this a little better. So we're already making improvements even prior to them coming. So once they come and they do that, they will send us a written report back. And then if there's any areas that we need some improvement, we'll just write some corrective action plans. They give us a certain amount of time, a deadline, and it's really pretty painless at that point. So we'll keep you updated as we go through this fun process.
Thank you. Wish it to take fat in that.
I'm sure she can find something for you to do.
Any comments or questions, Dr. Lozay?
Thank you.
Thank you for the update. And now everyone's favorite part of the evening, the evening.
Good evening. I've included in your packet a year-to-date budget report, dated November twenty-nine. In addition to that, I've also provided a listing of budget transfers within the same series and between series, which will require your approval. I'd be happy to answer any of your questions.
Any questions? Seeing none.
So can you, is it possible? Get a poll?
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the transfers between the series as persons decide if this is staying under.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let's move.
And last Thursday, on November twenty-ninth, I attended the opening of the heating oil bid for the French River Collaborative Group on behalf of Auburn Public Schools. Unfortunately, there was only one bid proposal. Unfortunately, there was only one bid proposal and after careful review by the group, we found that some of the language that was submitted as part of the proposal did not meet the, did not meet what we had put out as, as the bid. So we decided not to accept the bid. It was not, except it was thrown out. The group as a whole agreed to redo the invitation to bid. We're going to have a new opening date of January 3rd, so I'm hoping to have more information from you in a January meeting on what our oil prices will be for 2020.
Okay.
Currently, right now, for 2019, our oil, we pay $2.06 a gallon.
Wow.
So hopefully it won't go too much higher.
Do they just lock us in year by year? Do you have to revisit this every year or is it like a long-term?
Yes, we usually do. And we had, we had bid really early on 19th, so we knew 19th's way, way out of the gate. But we decided with the market being so, it was fluctuating so much that we decided to wait and we're hoping that it's going to work to our benefit. But we had one bidder and hopefully with the next one, we might get a couple more. We were going to, the young boss slip from French River was going to be reaching out. We're going to be advertising it, but they're just going to reach out to the vendors again and just let them know that we're ready, we have to. So hopefully we'll have some good news.
Was there any concern that oil may go up between now and our next bid?
No, we had looked at the, the market costs and they were pretty, you know, it wasn't too high at that point, so we're hoping not, but I mean, you never.
Yeah, you're not just wondering.
But you know, we just couldn't accept the bid as it was presented. There was some market demand that just really didn't fit what we were asking for, so we couldn't, you know, feel good about doing that.
Yeah.
Hopefully we'll keep our fingers crossed, so I'll let you know. On Wednesday, November 28th, I attended the town's budget kickoff presentation to the Finance Committee. CFO Kasonovitz provided a budget timeline for the FY 2020 budget and discussed budget projections. His assumption is using all prof two and a half, with wages at a 2% increase and all other lines being level funded. Revenue and new growth are up slightly and debt exclusions are decreasing. They talked about the high school definitely aging out. I believe it was, he said it was going to be in 2024, that it will be done, will be done paying for the high school and then the no school. We have about 16 more years to pay. Revenue, so I did say that already. I've included the presentation documents in your packet for your proposal, so. And then lastly, I've included in your packet a copy of the warrant table signed by Mrs. Holliday on the dates of October 30th, November 6th, and November 27th for your information. And that's my report. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions? Seeing none, thank you for that report. Excellent, as always. And we now move on to policies.
So included in your packet, the first 10 policies, as you can see, there are eight of the 10 have no changes to them at all, but we are asking for you to approve them so that way we show that they haven't updated. The two that do have changes, they're noted as tracking changes in red. These came from recommendations of MASs, but I carefully reviewed all of them and they are in alignment with what we do and in our practice as a school committee, your practice, I should say. It is my recommendation that you approve as presented.
I would entertain that motion.
Make a motion to approve the above-named policies as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This is a vote.
And then additionally, there are two new policies. This actually is part of the Title I and EL reviews. We have a supplement not supplied for Title I. This extends it to Title II-A and Title IV-A. So it is my recommendation you approve on first reading.
I would entertain that motion.
Make a motion to approve policies IPA and IB on first reading.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This is a vote. And do we need an executive session?
We do not.
We do not. I say I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Night, everyone.